Admin, ready? All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the work session for the Silver Consolidated Board of Education. We are out here in Cliff, it's April, so it's all good to see you guys and to be out here. Um, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, we're running a little bit late. It is five forty six, so we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, members of administration, fellow board members, and um, our colleagues in the audience. Roll call please, Patrick?
Mrs. Montenegro. Uh, Dr. Diaz. Myself here, Mr. McMillan.
Here.
And Mrs. Clement.
Here.
Thank you. Um, consideration and approval of this work session agenda, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion passes. And we turn to our Silver Consolidated School Superintendent, Mr. William Hawkins, with our consolidation task work, task force update.
Which is opposite of what I have, because I have Cliff Schools are far.
Okay, let's do that, so we'll update that. Are you doing this one during the regular meeting, maybe, or no?
Um, I was gonna, I was gonna mention it, but I was really gonna go over since we're Cliff.
Perfect, so it's this one, so the, what you were gonna present during the regular meeting is during the work session.
Yes, that's what I had prepared.
Got it, so under superintendent, number three.
But what I can do, if you give me thirty seconds.
He's going to present.
Cause I, I think because we're on the agenda, I wanna make sure we stay on.
Task.
Task, so let me, if you'll give me thirty seconds, I came in, running to the other task. And Mr.
So you do have another one you could do?
Yes, I have it, uh, my notes. Uh, Ms. Alfris, can you stall for thirty-eight seconds?
Sure, so as we were coming in, I just couldn't help but notice how much the sunsets have changed. And it's due to all of the, all of the particulates that are in the air now because of the high wind situations, which is a great habit, I'm gonna tell you, on all of our sporting events. It's been true, true, beautiful sunsets, but the downside, of course, is that we're not able to go ahead and play our sports. But hopefully here in the near future, we'll be able to go ahead and uh, get all of those sports teams caught back up. I know there might be some games that'll be out of sequence, but we'll definitely do our very best to get them in there.
Thank you, Ms. Alfris.
Um.
I, I love him, he is.
He's good, yeah.
He is good.
I would've bought that for ten dollars.
Um, and then we go to, I can't see my little um, slideshow, here we go. So what I, what I won't do is run through the entirety of the entire meeting too. Um, one, we had a, an amazing uh, team of teachers, parents, and staff at this last uh, meeting. This particular meeting was probably one of the most important meetings that we had, because it really got to the heart of the issue of consolidation. Um, we got down to looking at building data, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna fly right through this, um, just for the sake of time. Building data, we talked about financial resources, we talked about our FMP analysis, transportation, uh, boundary concepts, and then what that practice looks like, and then we finally did a poll. One of the things that we were able to do with this, um, at this particular meeting, was really get down to the possibility of can we do this? If we consolidate one or two buildings, what does it look like, both for traditional, which is what we call our neighborhood schools? And what does it look like if you were to grade band? Meaning, we talk about grade banding, um, it's the conceptual idea that all of one grade will go to a specific building. So currently, for example, you have all of kindergarteners go to Sixth Street. So if you grade banded, would you have, would we be able to have kinder first and second at a building? Third building, third, fourth, and fifth at a building, sixth at a building. So grade banding, and could we conceivably really do it? Um, and what the data and the presentations told us was that we could. In each of the scenarios that they looked at, and whether it was grade banding, or whether it was the traditional neighborhood school, what we were able to see is there was room in every building, and in some cases with vacant spaces, that we're able to do it. We're able to do it without crowding our classrooms, making sure that we have the same sized classes as far as volume that we currently experience now. Which was a good thing. We talked about our FMP, we reiterated transportation, what it was determined. Um, one of the concerns was if we grade banded, would we be able to um, move forward um, without having tran- excessive transportation costs? Um, transportation got together with Montoya Busing, looked at the routes, looked at the costs, looked at the time, and for the most part, uh, it was agreed that there would be minimal impact to transportation if you did neighborhoods or grade banding. One, because if you eliminated one or two buildings, the same number of drop-off points would remain the same. Um, if you grade banded, you would simply, instead of going to one or two buildings, you would still have to visit the other two buildings to drop off the different age group students. Right, and so you weren't increasing the number of routes, it was approximately the same. Once they looked at that, they were able to make the determination that from a cost standpoint, it was neutral to some extent, right? We'd have to look at the schedule, start and stop times if you grade banded, but that was one of the issues. And looking at our ridership, we have approximately four hundred and fifty students. Traditional schools, uh, that, it was about five to ten, we'd have to increase our time. And if we did grade banding, we might be able to decrease our time five to ten minutes. But from a, a parent, school, system standpoint, that's negligible and hardly noticeable. We looked at boundaries, we looked at the layouts of the schools, plans analysis for each of the campuses. And at the end of that meeting, of going through, looking at layouts and looking at concepts, the, the group was able to come to a decision and go through a poll. And so I stopped short of saying the decision or the poll, because we're still not ready to make a recommendation to the board. And so, but until we're able to make that final recommendation to the board, I don't wanna preempt the task force. But I'm here to be able to tell you that the task force is well underway. They've had some incredibly tough but responsible conversations. Um, and they did a poll, they made some decisions at this last meeting. That information is going to guide us in the next meeting. And it is our hope and expectation that by meeting four, we will be able to come to the board with a series of recommendations for you to consider over the summer. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hawkins? From the board? No? All right.
Will we get a copy of the presentation?
I can absolutely send you a copy of the presentation.
Thank you.
Um, do you want the Hawkins unedited version, or would you like the Cliff notes?
Go for the Cliff notes.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Hawkins.
No worries.
Uh, that's all we have for our work session, so I will call for a motion for adjournment, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan, do we have a second? No, I know. Thank you. Probably. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regular um, board meeting for the Silver Consolidated Board of Education for the month of April, so we are out here in Cliff, thank you for having us, it's always so wonderful to be out here and get to see you guys. Um, welcome fellow board members, members of administration, staff, students, parents, those of you with us in the audience, thank you for joining us. It is April twenty eighth, and we are in session at six oh six P M. Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Mrs. Montenegro.
Here.
Dr. Diaz. Uh, myself here, Mr. McMillan.
Here.
And Mrs. Clement.
Here.
Thank you. If you would all please join us for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the New Mexico flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is review and approval of minutes. In your board packet, you will find our special meeting, uh, minutes from Ma- March twelfth, as well as the finance committee meeting from March thirteenth, and our work session and regular board meeting of March thirty first. Uh, motion for approval, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Clement. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next item on our agenda is consideration and approval of tonight's agenda, I open the floor for a motion. Thank you, Mr. McMillan, do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Khan, any discussion?
Do we need to take the thing from Mr. Hawkins' presentation?
Actually, he, he actually reverted back to, he did the work session, was the consolidated task force, and then he will present on the Cliff Schools architectural, thank you. I think we are good, any other uh, discussion on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. The next section of our agenda is our information and presentations, these are our non-action items. Um, item A, programs and presentations, we will start out with our Kiwanis Student of the Month, and this month they will be presented by Mr. William Hawkins, our superintendent.
Ms. Montenegro, members of the board, for half a second, my brain just froze, it was like, okay.
Mine, yeah.
So, it's my pleasure to introduce the Kiwanis uh, Service Leadership Program Awards. Uh, the Kiwanis has done a wonderful job in supporting Silver Schools, Colbray Schools, our area, and making sure that we recognize the students in our respective districts. The Kiwanis Club of Silver City and the, the Kiwanis Club Community Foundation, are volunteer-run organizations committed to helping our community. In our county, they provide leadership opportunities and through recognition of Terrific Kids Program, which is K six, Builders Club at La Plata and Snow Middle School, and key clubs at Cliff, Silver, and Colbray High. Key leader, a key leader is a leadership camp providing life-changing experiences that inspires young people to achieve their personal best through service and leadership. The Kiwanis Student of the Month program recognizes outstanding students in Silver and Colbray and at our high schools. And that is what we're here to do today, is to represent, or to recognize our student of the month. And so Riley Gonzalez, would you please come on down? All right, Riley, so I'm gonna read some of the wonderful things that the teachers and staff here have said about you, and recommending, recommending you for this recognition. Now you have to stand here and test this, okay, all right. Can you not look so tall as you're standing? Cliff Schools is proud to recognize Riley Gonzalez as the Kiwanis Student of the Month for April. A senior known for her strong work ethic, leadership, and kindness. Riley is a shining example of what it means to be a role model in and out of the classroom. Riley consistently demonstrates leadership, not only as an athlete, but as a mentor and motivator for younger students. One teacher shared, Riley is such a good leader and role model for the underclassmen. She's always inclusive of the kids, whether it's on the court, on the track, or in the classroom. She brings a positive energy that uplifts those around her. Her ability to take younger students under her wing and help guide them shows her compassionate, encouraging spirit. Are you gonna be a teacher? I want you to think about this. In addition to her athletic achievements and team leadership, Riley is also highly dedicated to her academics. She puts in tremendous effort and balances her studies with an active schedule that includes school, work, and extracurriculars. Her commitment was further demonstrated this year through her successful participation in state FFA and opportunity embraced by only a few seniors. Riley's respectful nature, joyful personality, and consistent drive makes her a standout student and a tru- truly deserving recipient of this reward. Teachers and staff at Cliff Schools recognize and appreciate her hard work, her kind heart, and the positive impact she continues to have on the school community. Riley will be missed next year when she continues her education at Eastern Arizona College to pursue a career in the field of education. Did I read that wrong? Okay. To pursue her career in the field of criminal justice. But we know she'll bring her leadership positivity and strong work ethic to her new campus. We are excited to recognize Riley, and so I have to say this the way they would, this comes with a student of the month. Here's a bumper sticker, excuse me, Kiwanis Student of the Month for your parents, so don't think you'll brag about how wonderful you are. This, I'll put this in a frame, preferably gold. And this is a Kiwanis gift card to Sonic for me.
Thank you.
She's trying, she's helping you out. All right, Mr. Hawkins, we have you up for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Cliff School calendar as well.
Actually, we're still under.
Oh, this is different. Oh, thank you, I skipped way down.
It's okay.
Next is Ms. Stacy Swope, I hope I said that correctly.
You did.
Did I?
Yes.
Awesome, Cliff Schools Ag Teacher and FFA Sponsor with Student Recognitions, welcome, thank you for joining us.
I do have a few students with me as well, so I've got Kaylee Summers, Teagan Treviso, and Riley Gonzalez gonna join me up here. And I do have my notes on my phone, so I apologize. So this year, we had about thirty students competing for um, FFA's career development events. Um, and so we had eight different categories um, of competition. So we had an ag mechanics team, which consisted of Dustin Hooker, Ethan Greaman, Hunter Guerin, and Hunter Weaver. Um, at the state contest, they finished twenty-first overall, which is a very incredible achievement for such a young team, they're all middle school students, um, to show up and compete really well at the state contest, we're so proud of them. Um, and only one of them caught themselves on fire, so we are doing great. Yes, he got a little bit of his shirt, but it's okay, he's, he's all good, little bit. He was so proud to tell me he got the fire put out without anybody noticing. So we are, we're doing great, and we're hopeful that they've learned from all of their um, adventures in ag mechanics. Our food science team consisted of Imalyn Alsop, Haley Best, Paisley Donaldson, and Riley Gonzalez. They finished eighth overall at the state contest. Our forestry team, um, consisted of Haley Best, Paisley Donaldson, Pearson Fowler, and Teagan Treviso. Uh, they finished thirteenth overall at the state contest. Our horse team, um, consisted of Dusty Waters, Peyton Waters, Riley Vermillion, and Tucker Gatlin. That same team also competed in livestock as well. And then our pasture and range team, oh, sorry, um, horse finished eighth overall and livestock finished fourteenth overall. And then pasture and range finished um, eighth overall, and that team was Danica Moon, Dustin Hooker, Harper Alsop, and Molly Alsop. We also had a horticulture team, which did not qualify for state. Um, they worked really hard throughout the invitationals, they were just a little short, so hopefully this next year, we'll get them bumped up to the state level. And we also had two individuals um, participating in the wildlife contest. Um, that was Jet Tedford and Hunter Guerin. And they um, learned a lot of the contest, and we're hoping to get them a full team for next year, um, to compete in that as well. We've got all of our lovely kids up there. Um, so our students right now are gonna give us a little um, look at what contests they did, and give you a brief description of what it looks like, um, and then what they've learned from it. Teagan's gonna go first.
So forestry consists of um, IDing, I, equipment, forest, or forestry disorders, and of course forestry, and, which is trees, my bad. Um, and then they had you take a quiz, just about pretty much everything there is to know.
A little math involved in there with forestry, and how the Forest Service would use that in real life implications?
Unfortunately. And then they had, um, what was it?
The team component?
The team component, which was timber cruising, which you measured out, what, a hundred feet? A hundred feet, and you measured the height of the tree, and then the, I think they had a paste section, which you just pasted out and did the.
Did you learn all of this?
Um, I learned it's not easy as it sounds. It is very semi-difficult to understand and remember all of it at once, at the state level, so.
This is first year competing in forestry, it's actually our first year having a forestry team in quite some time. So we're getting back into it and learning uh, the material, and that they ended up being very competitive throughout the invitationals, and so we'll keep going on to state, hopefully next year.
I carried, by the way.
Yes, absolutely. All right, Riley, she's gonna tell us about food science.
So food science consists of a series of tests, there was a math, um, problem-solving test, uh, there was an aroma test and a triangle test, and the triangle test is where you take three uh, different like food products, and there's one that's different, and so you try to identify which one's different. And then there was a team activity where you come up with a food product, and you give a sales pitch on that. And what I got from that was it helped better my uh, public speaking uh, skills, cause that scares me.
But she's doing great, look at this.
You're doing awesome.
Right, we're, we're coming so far.
But, yeah, and then the team bonding was definitely a great thing too, so.
All right, and then Kaylee's gonna talk to us about horticulture.
Horticulture is where you identify different fruits and vegetables, as well as herbs and nuts. And then they have a math section. One of the main components is it, is area, how to know what area you need. There was also a, what was it called? Classes where you place, there's four different fruits or vegetables, and you place them one through four, then you go into the reasons component of it, and place, and say why you place them in that order. What you can get from horticulture is how to know what fruit and vegetables are good, versus which ones are bad and worse for you, based on how they look and how they are. And another component is judging as a whole, is about teamwork, compassion, how to communicate with others, how to implement things that you could use daily in life, as well as, what was it called? As well as problem-solving for future job careers. As if you want to go into a food product, much like food science, you could do horticulture. That could also apply to foods, as well as many other things used in life.
So we're very proud of all of our students, um, we have a lot of younger middle school students that are coming up into the program. Uh, we've got a few seniors that are retiring and leaving us, but we're really excited to see all of these different components. We start practices as soon as we get back from Christmas break, so we go from January to um, May, or April, sorry. January to April, um, and so we spend a lot of time, they do um, practices after school, weekend competitions. They put a lot of time and effort into these um, contests, and they're very successful, and we're just so proud of them. Good job, guys.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm in the right place. Next, we have Stephanie Tedford with Cliff Schools FCC LA, Student Recognition. Oh, actually, we have Chelsea, welcome, Mrs. Shock.
Mrs. Tedford couldn't make it tonight, so I wanted to honor her daughter, Ryan. Um, Ryan Tedford, a senior at Cliff High, was awarded the prestigious Gold Award with the top score of ninety-five point three in her senior level division at the Family Center and Community Leaders of America, FCC LA. Ryan's achievements has presented her the opportunity to compete at FCC LA's national competition this summer in July. Her project overview is called Make It to Market. It was created to fulfill a need to have regu- regular education students interact and model life skills among students with exceptionalities and special needs. Collaboratively, students brainstorm ideas, plan, and create hand crafts, baked goods, and freeze-dried snacks. Ultimately, students take and sell their creations, goods, and services to our Gila Valley Farmer's Market, where they gain entrepreneurial experience while interacting with the local community. Make It to Market has proven to make a positive impact in numerous ways. In our rural pre-K through grade twelve school, all students have the opportunity to thrive in building basic life skills, and in further developing interpersonal skills as they have been coming together to create and sell authentic goods and products at our local market. The ongoing project has also promoted inclusivity, resulting in building relationships between our diverse students and our greater rural community. The whole concept has proven to be a phenomenal way to provide support to our students as they learn invaluable skills in an ongoing, real-world scenario, creating, communicating, growing, and experiencing the impact of their work efforts and willingness firsthand. Our students and school have also benefited financially as the community has been generous to continue to buy our products at the market, helping this to be a sustainable endeavor. Because of the nature, focus, and uniqueness of her project, Ryan has received high praises and feedback about how impactful her project is and will continue to be. Many teachers, administrators, and FCC LA advisors statewide have reached out to her asking for more details and insight about how to incorporate this type of project into their programs. At this time, Cliff School CTE programs continue to participate in the weekly farmer's market, and Ryan is actively making every effort to fundraise for her upcoming national competition. We appreciate the support from our school, community, district, and the school board for offering many opportunities to help all of our students achieve and succeed.
Do you know if she put in a request from the board for any funding? Financial support for her?
I do not know, I know she's working on the paperwork, but I will make sure that she does.
Perfect.
And then our junior class president, Brennan Shock, is um, going to continue giving an update on the rest of the activities that our students are involved in.
Brennan, would you be willing to do that under my section uh, here shortly? Awesome. You, you cleaned up from golf.
Thank you, he'll actually be coming right back up.
Yes.
Um, the next item is our STEA president, Ms. Diane Carrico, with nothing to present, so next, moving right along. Um, subsection five, information to the board. A, Superintendent William Hawkins with the Cliff Schools Technology Student Association, but we'll do him first, right?
We'll do technology students first, and then we'll have Brennan follow right up behind him.
Okay.
You look sharp there, gentleman. Did he just change shirts?
President, members of the board and other guests, thanks for having us. Uh, my name is Jasper Alsop, and I am the president of our TSA organization. These are my teammates, Hunter Copchick and Teagan Treviso, and not with us today is our other teammate, Zachary Eagleson. And as a team, this past March, we competed at the TSA State National Convention, which by the way, TSA stands for Technology Student Association, not the airport security. Um, and we complete, competed in the solar sprint competition, where we placed second in the state, and qualified for nationals, which Tean will tell you a little bit about.
So for solar sprint, it's basically just, what's the name, solar sprint with a car. And so we have this year's, this year's um, current solar car, and um, this is what got us second place. I mainly did the design process, the. I mainly did the design process, the others just did the engineering. I don't know that much, so. Um, so I based it off of a Grant County Sheriff truck, which I got inspiration from our friendly uh deputy, Mr. Don Gatlin out here, who provides um or tickets to those speeders. My bad. And so although it's not the exact one, it's just based off of a Silver City truck. And um. And inside we have the payload which we had to, yeah.
So um, he mentioned earlier he that he was the design, he designed the um aesthetics parts. But underneath where we have, this is a solar panel, so we were tasked with creating a car that could either run off a solar panel or I don't know if you guys can see from there, but there's batteries in there. So via the wire switches that it could run off of either solar panel or the batteries. Which the competition's actually held inside, which is strange. Um, for a solar car. Um, part of the competition is asked to be able to transport some goods. This year being two ping pong balls, you have to be able to put them in and take them out without destroying your car pretty much. And we just have two little rings in there where we were able to put them. And then you can just put the solar panel on top and it kinda holds them down, so.
And we, this year we qualified to go up to the next level, which is nationals. And this year nationals is being held in Nashville, Tennessee from June twenty-sixth to July first. And my friend here Hunter will explain what we need.
In order for us to go to nationals, it's in Nashville, so we'd have to fundraise a lot. And we've done a few fundraising things, but we need a lot of money for transportation, food, staying at a hotel, et cetera. And um, like I said, we've done some fundraising, but we're gonna have to do a lot of fundraising over the summer before. And we'd love your guys' support if you could help us fundraise. Uh, with all that said, thank you for your time. We really appreciate talking with you guys and we are glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the TSA team? Is this the first year of you guys competing or have we seen this before? Was this the little car also?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Uh, we've competed before and actually have won state the la- previous two years in solar sprint. But with the same funding issue, we haven't been able to go to nationals. This year with the fundraising we've done throughout, we should have enough if we continue to fundraise. But support would be very helpful.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have Mr. Brennan Shock.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, for everybody that doesn't know me, my name is Brennan Shock and tonight I will be giving an update on Cliff Schools Athletics. Uh, the girls' basketball had a very successful season this year, ending the season with twenty wins and five losses. They won three regular season tournaments, including the Cloudcroft Tournament, the Cloud Girl Invitational and the Gila Valley Round Robin. The Cowgirls also had a great postseason, beating Gateway Christian in the first round of state, beating Melrose in the quarterfinals and losing a close game to the number two seed Fort Sumner in the semifinals. Making one of the top four teams in one A for the second year in a row. Nisa Gutierrez has been selected as second team All-State this year. Uh, for boys' basketball, we finished with the record of twenty-three and seven this year. The Cowboys had an exciting and successful season as well. We won the Cliff Roundup and the Cloudcroft Tournament. The Cowboys eventually finished as district runner-up, but we did beat Magdalena one time this year and they have not lost a district game in eight years. That was definitely one of the highlights for us this year. Cliff went on to beat Gateway Christian in the first round of the state tournament and were eventually defeated in the quarterfinals by the number one seed, the Logan Longhorns. Tason Yost was selected to play in the New Mexico High School Coaches Association All-Star Game. Brennan Shock was selected uh second team All-State and Tason Yost was selected honorable mention All-State. Tason Yost and Breck Baptiste both received New Mexico Athletic Association scholarships while attending the state basketball tournament in March. Onto girls' track. The girls' track team has been successful so far this season, winning first in the Komodo Invite, second in the Cliff Invitational, second in the Richard Moore Relays and third at the Cobry Invite. The Cowgirl- Cowgirls are looking to win their second straight district championship in Magdalena on Friday. State qualifiers so far are Brooklyn Looney in the Javelin and Riley Gonzalez in the Shot Put. Onto boys', onto boys' track, the Cowboys have had a very successful season so far. Winning first place in the Cliff Invitational, the Richard Moore Relays and the Komodo Invite. The Cowboys finished third in the Cobry Track Meet as well. Jasper Alsop won high point individual at the Lordsburg Track Meet. Bryson Shock set a new school record in the sixteen hundred meter run at the Cobry Meet with a time of five flat point fifty-nine. The Cowboys are seeking to win their fourth straight district championship this year, this coming Friday in Magdalena. State qualifiers so far are Tason Yost in the long jump and high jump, Bryson Shock in the one mile and two mile, Jasper Alsop in the long jump and four hundred meter dash and Jayden O'Phill in the high jump. Now onto golf. The girls' golf team have nine girls participating this year and have played in ten tournaments so far. Uh, in the Cliff Spring Invite at Silver City this year, with placements, we have first place with Brooklyn Looney, second place Riley Vermilion and fifth place Brooklyn Bird. Uh, and placements in the Gila Valley Shootout at Safford, Arizona. Uh, first place Brooklyn Looney, second place Riley Vermilion, fourth place Brooklyn Bird and fifth place Michaela Olery. Up next for boys' golf, we, this year we have eight boys participating uh for placements this year. Uh, at the Cliff Spring Invite in Silver City, first place was myself Brennan Shock. And then at the Gila Valley Shootout in Safford, Arizona, first place myself Brennan Shock and fifth place Breck Baptiste. The district championship in golf will be played in Socorro on Monday, May fifth. And the state tournament will be played in Kirtland on May twelfth and thirteenth. We are hoping to qualify with as many players as possible. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Alright, now here we are at the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Cliff School calendar. Mr. Hawkins will present.
Madam President, members of the board, you should have a copy of the printout of the calendar. Um, the Cliff Schools has presented for the board's approval this evening. Um, this year, the, the calendar, like recent years, there's, there's been constant discussion at the state level. Um, there was some feedback given to superintendents um about a week or so ago, really encouraging districts that have, that are fi- four day or have four day campuses to ensure that from an instructional standpoint, that we identify all of those days, uh, those four days of the week that are instruction as four day weeks, right? Um, meaning the, there have been times where districts around the state, um, whether it be here or in Cobry could have a five day instructional week and still be considered a four day um campus because the vast majority of weeks are four days. Um, it is suggested that as the state um refines and cleans up language and addresses in the court system what delineates a four day school from a five day school, that when they make that final decision, if you're a campus that has identified itself as a four day campus, but you have within your calendar a five day instructional um week within your four day calendar, they may i- automatically identify you as a five day a week campus. And so we had a conversation with Cliff that had finished their calendar last week, um, but then had to go back and, and make a look uh to make sure that they were in the right spaces. Um, we are not the only district around the state that had to go back and take a quick look at their calendar, um, given that particular feedback. Um, and so what you have in front of you um is the recommended calendar. Um, as you go through it, you will see that there, every week I believe that is identified as a four day instructional week. Um, there are some Fridays that are identified as staff workdays, which is permissible uh under that particular guidance. Um, their calendar meets their requirements of mandatory one thousand one hundred and forty hours of instruction while also meeting our requirement for contract days as well. And I will stand for any questions from the board. Um, if there's any specific details, I'll have to refer to Tommy and, um, excuse me, Ms. Alsop and Ms. Shock who are standing in waiting.
Thank you. Any questions on the Cliff School calendar? Alright, nothing. And the next thing you have for us now is the Cliff Schools Architectural and Design RFP.
Alrighty, let me get this loaded. Stop it, stop it. My computer shut down halfway through the first part. I thought it was Mr. Potts playing a prank on me again. It was not. Madam President, members of the board, I'll briefly go through an update on the RFR process. Um, Madam President, members of the board, um, I also have Michelle McCain. Did I say RFR? RFP process? I did do that. See, I make mistakes. Um, I also have Ms. McCain here to correct me uh as I go through this process. So, as you know, we recently got approved to um go through our um build a new campus here in Cliff. And so part of the process is two phases. One, you have to find an architectural and design firm to design and go through the process with your community. Once that's completed and done, we go back to the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council with that recommendation um that is completed through the architectural design firm um for construction. And so this first part, um, and we can just say Amanda Peterson in Michelle McCain's office is awesome. Um, she has had to learn this process of procurement and completing this process, learning the Trimble software through the Public Schools Council, Capital Outlay Council. Um, there's a lot of tedious bureaucracy and paperwork that goes into this process for every aspect of capital outlay dollars, every aspect. And there is a huge tree that she has to go through to push things through. But she has done that and she's gotten so good at it um that we've received tons of compliments in really short time about her organization, her ta- her ability to be a task manager, to not let uh time go by. She's done a great job. If I may borrow a term, she is phenomenal. Um, and so I, I just, I, I would be remiss if I did not mention her. So we go, um, selection committee, we had district leadership, facility, staff and community representatives for Cliff. Specifically, um, Ms. Alsop and Ms. Shock were on that committee to, that reviewed the architectural design firms. Um, these are the criteria. Um, their ability to look at design and technical, technical competence. Their capacity and capability to perform the work, meaning did they have too many other jobs outstanding? Did they have the resources and experience to do the job? Past record of performance obviously is a high a number of points. Proximity to or familiarity with our location. Um, i- i- if you are located uh on the other side of Arizona or Carl Laredo or New Mexico, that made a huge difference in the decisions and how we rewarded points. New Mexico produced work and volume of work were also part of the point spread. Our finalists, we had eight firms submitted proposals, Arcus, ASA, CSR, Decker, Desert Peak, FBT, McLean, not McCain, McLean, uh, and you, and V Hill and Associates. And I want to note it that I said V Hill and not Virgil. It's an inside joke, we struggled for a good chunk of time. From the eight here that you saw, we narrowed it down to three final um architectural firms, ASA, Decker and V Hill. All three of these are incredibly reputable um and provided a very solid um resource for us to review for recommendation. Not sure why this is taking so long, but okay. Uh, what happened? That's Mr. P- uh, Mr. Potts is messing with my computer. So a quick snapshot of ASA, um, they have experienced prior, they have experienced prior work here in Cliff. Over fifty years of service, uh skilled at balancing and functionality, culture and educational needs. Designs aligned with our, with New Mexico Energy Conservation Code, ADA standards. Extensive experience with rural pre-K schools, thoughtful designs, veteran project management capabilities. Decker, spaces focused on learning, collaboration and success. They tr- planned to honor Cliff's Cowboys culture and they even incorporated forhouse system in their, in, in their thought process. Uh, they are currently working on a Silver City Recreation Center project. Um, pre-K twelve special uh school replacement expertise. Emphasis on resilience, low maintenance, energy efficiency. Um, they have a, and, and I would imagine that they all say this, but they also emphasize familiarity with PSFA compliance, budget management and construction sequencing. And V Hill and Associates, stakeholder engagement, communication emphasized. Award-winning designs with minimal change orders, meaning once they got into the process, there was few times that you would have to go back and redo the work with them. Um, exceptional familiarity with the Cliff site and community needs. High commitment to quality assurance and professional construction drawings and sustainability and technology integration expertise. Now, the very brief summary that I just gave can no way totally encompass the entire presentations and the package that they gave to us. We did face-to-face interviews last week on Thursday um with these three finalists. So given their portfolio they provided in the presentations, please do not be limited to my brief snapshot uh recommend, comments about what they have to offer. Um, elements that we looked at are technical expertise and their design philosophies and what we were looking for. Like I'm gonna eat the microphone at any moment. So the next steps will be the approval of the finalist firm that'll be recommended later today. And contract negotiation will begin shortly. Um, once we get to the other side of the contract negotiations, that architectural design, design firm will then walk us through the timeline of their process for working with and getting feedback from committee, working with our campus, our administrators, our staff, our students and going through the process of designing the future campus for Cliff Schools. Um, we had an aggressive timeline, um, and each one of them in presented, shared their recognition that we have some high expectations from beginning this project, it from beginning to end. Um, I'm not sure who might have mentioned more than once that we have an expectation of being cost efficient and staying within budget. I'm, I'm not sure where that came from. Um, but I think that was prevalent in the dialogue, but also making sure that we build um an amazing facility out here. And so, um, I will stop and stand for any questions from the board.
Questions for Mr. Hawkins?
When will you come, President Montenegro, uh, Mr. Hawkins, when will you and the team come up with who's gonna be the award?
We're gonna be approving it tonight.
You'll approve the recommendation this evening.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. Hawkins. That's exciting. Uh, next up is our Associate Superintendent, Mr. Luis Alvarez with our personnel report.
Uh, Madam President, Mr. Hawkins, members of the board, uh, community members and anyone in Cyberland there. As you look at this uh personnel report, you probably went, oh my god, right? Uh, it's that time of the year, uh, we have dropped down to a ninety-three point seven percent field. Uh, I am happy to report that on Friday, uh, I did end up, uh, myself and, and both of my secretaries, we ended up going uh to UTEP. Uh, we were able to fill some positions uh from there, so uh very, very happy. So three of the positions that are on there have already been taken care of. But I do stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Alvarez on the personnel report? Let's keep going. What's up? Athletic handbook, update please.
So, uh, Madam President, members of the board, uh, Mr. Hawkins, we do have these changes that are uh put into place that you'll be uh voting hopefully on. we do have these changes that are put into place that you'll be voting hopefully on here later this afternoon. We did get our committee together with our athletic directors, and we went over what changes we felt were happening in a negative that we needed to address and take care of. There's very few, and I want to put a shout-out to our athletic directors. I know they work extremely hard to make sure that everything goes well. This came up in the red is going to be the change that we're asking for. What it is basically talking about is participation from eighth-grade students. And what it says is at the termination and the completion of their eighth-grade season, meaning their season needs to be completely done. That means that there are no more districts or end-of-season competition, and they need to have completed their season. A student athlete may be accepted to high school competition with the approval of the exiting, entering coaches, and both athletic directors. And so, if they feel that, hey, we've got some really good student athletes that would benefit our program, the exiting coach, and the reason that we put that into play is so that the exiting coach might have some information. The entering coach might say, "Yeah, bring them on in," you know? But doesn't know maybe work ethic, maybe not showing up to practices, maybe disciplinary issues. And so, we wanted everybody to be in the know. And so, that was the reason for why we wanted exiting, entering, and then both athletic directors, so that everybody's aware. When you go from eighth grade to the high school, you do what is called an open enrollment. And that's the big reason that the ADs need to be aware of that. You have to petition the state to go ahead and say, "This kid is going to participate at the high school level." And so, for that reason, that's why we put all of those parameters in there, to make sure that everybody's aware and cognizant of what they're, what they're asking for. And so, that was that change on 2.4. On 2.5, we put into place there in the red, discipline of student athletes will be determined by the discipline matrix for the school in which they participate. As you probably know, we've got some student athletes from Aldo. We have student athletes from Calvary Christian. And so, they would follow whatever our discipline matrix is for Silver High or La Plata. And so, we put that into play so that there's no confusion as to, well, if I got in trouble on a trip, how would that get addressed? Or how we would utilize the discipline matrix from that school. On 3.1, this is eligibility requirements. There have been some questions as far as dual credit or online classes. Does that count for eligibility? And it does. This is a requirement from the NMAA. All classes, any of the classes that you take. If you administer a grade for that class, that goes into your calculation. This came into play when we were talking about some student athletes that were participating in activities. They did not have the GPA that made them eligible. The big conversation that we ended up having on this one was, if they're going to represent our school, they need to represent our school with all of the following eligibility requirements that any participant, whether it's in an activity or whether it's in sports. And so, that was where that rule change came into play.
Real quickly on that one, it says the change from NMAA eligibility requirements where a student was allowed 1F is no longer true. So, none of our student athletes can have an F.
None of your student athletes can have an F.
Or people that participate in activities.
Or in any of our activities, that is correct.
No Fs.
No Fs.
Thank you.
You've got it. On other eligibility requirements, this one is talking about out-of-season or seasonal participation. And this one, we asked for the inclusion of, if a student wishes to participate in multiple school-sponsored sports or activities, they must first verify practice schedules and competition schedules with the athletic director and the coach prior to participation. This, this request came about from having student athletes. Most definitely, it's a NMAA rule that you can do dual participation. But we need to know who's participating. I'll give you an example of what the driving force was. You had a student athlete that was participating in two sports, but the athletic director never knew they were participating in two sports until they came up with the first day that they were actually going to go ahead and participate. The reason he didn't know, no, but we didn't have this rule in place. And what was happening is the student was saying, "Well, I'm going to be going to this sport for today," and then didn't report to that sport, actually didn't go. We were responsible for that student because they were enrolled in that, in that activity, and then they didn't show up. But they didn't get docked because the coach didn't inform and the athletic director didn't know. So, we want to make sure, if you want to participate, that's great. We support that, and we follow the NMAA rules. But what we're asking for is before you do that, say, "Hey, I'm going to go out for cheerleading, and I'm also going to go out for volleyball." Or, "I'm going to go out with a band. I'm going to participate with a band, but I'm also going to do volleyball." So that there's an understanding between both programs and the, and the athletic director as far as, okay, we got to set up practice schedules. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you're going to do a band during the band competition time. And then Tuesdays, Thursdays would be volleyball. And then vice versa, when it's the off-season for that time, they can still participate, but we might flip it. And so, that was the driving force behind that one. As you can see, this whole thing is red. This is a new parent behavior at sporting activities and events. This is dealing with unsportsmanlike behavior. NMAA has already come out with parents getting ejected from, from sporting events. What we wanted to do is we wanted to tell our parents, hey, we love all of the participation. We want that participation. We want you to be there for our events, but we want you to do it in an appropriate manner and with respect and kindness towards our teachers, our coaches, and our students, of course. So, if on the first unsportsmanlike behavior that results in a warning, it's a warning, you are escorted off of the school grounds, and that individual is asked to complete a National Federation of High School Sporting Events. It's a learning center. It's an online course. And once you complete those courses, then you'll be allowed to go ahead and continue to come back to the activity. What we're trying to do here is just reiterate, hey, we need proper behavior. And so, these courses end up talking about that proper behavior. Everybody gets excited, but we need to do that in an appropriate manner. If we end up having a second unsportsmanlike behavior, that incident will result in a suspension from attending that particular sport or extracurricular activity. So, if it's at a band concert, let's say, or a marching band, and the person is just being rude or obnoxious and is asked to leave, and this is the second violation, they will no longer be allowed to go ahead and participate as a spectator at those events. And so, they'll be banned for that season. If there is a third unsportsmanlike, then that will result in a full expense, a full suspension from being able to go ahead and attend any of the events for that year. And so, those were the recommendations from the athletic directors. And it gives examples of egregious unsportsmanlike conduct. They're not limited, but you can definitely see, you know, spectators going onto the playing field or the activity field, right, engaging in violence or abuse, repeated verbal attacks on coaches, players, spectators, or officials. Right now, we're having a hard time keeping officials. I know that everybody gets to sit in the stands and be an official, but there's only one official, and they're on the court. So, we got to keep that in mind. Any derogatory, derogatory, sorry about that, derogatory attacks on coaches or officials. Physical altercations, of course, during or after a game. We've had some of those situations from parents to parents. Student sections or spectators chanting inappropriate or demeaning or vulgar comments towards individuals, teams, or officials. And so, we want to work proactively with the parent. That's where that piece of the online courses. But we also want to go ahead and make sure that we're, we're modeling for our students the behavior that we're, we're expecting out of, out of our adults and our students. Go ahead there, Mr. Hawkins.
Madam President, members of the board, I just want to reiterate the last part of what Mr. Alvarez just said, because I think that's so important. One, we want to model the appropriate behavior. And that's what NMAA expects, and that's what we expect, and that's what we hope for. When you come to the games, we want to celebrate our students. We want to champion our teams, and we want to do those things whether we're in person or when we're in other spaces. And so, by no means do we expect to be the, the one-stop-in-all-knowing-and-all-information. But at the same time, we have seen an excessive amount of extreme derogatory comments and to, whether it's to coaches who sacrifice their time and for our kids, but also at students. And it's not okay. And I think anyone who's here, who's been at a game or seen the things that we've seen, recognize, gosh, that is horrible. That is awful. That's embarrassing. We want to celebrate our kids. We want to celebrate our teams. NMAA recognized that this continues to get out of hand, and so, they've taken steps to address it. I looked and visited with other superintendents around the state, and they too have taken steps similar to this to address this, incur this behavior. It's hard enough to find coaches, and it's hard enough to keep our teams and keep them working together through a season. It doesn't help when they are constantly barraged either in, at the game, on-site, or in social media spheres where it can get ugly. And so, what we want to do is basically celebrate our kids. We're not saying that, saying that people won't be people and have comments. You can't be a coach without having thick skin. But there is a line, and just like there's a line at a game where, okay, that went too far, and the referee turns and says, "Okay, stop it, and that's enough." The same thing should be true for us. We should expect that behavior for our kids.
This next section here is just a parent giving us a heads-up on what sport or activity their, their student athlete would be participating in. This is very helpful for the athletic directors. They always have to go ahead and continue to take the documentation at the end, saying that they understand that schedules can change. They understand that their student athlete would be participating in these events, and they're giving them permission. So, what it does is it allows us to go ahead and say, "Okay, you're participating in these activities. They've been identified. We're going to go ahead and make copies so that as those sporting activity goes, we can always go ahead and provide that coach with all of their student athletes." This, this last one, we have, of course, for Silver High, La Plata Middle School, and then also Cliff. This just identifies all of the clubs and organizations, activities, sports that these kids participate in, that they will be held accountable as far as understanding the handbook and participating appropriately within that handbook. And so, that is Silver High's page. And here is La Plata and Cliff's page. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Even though I'm sitting, I'm sorry.
Any questions for Mr. Alvarez on the athletic handbook for Silver Schools? No? Yes, Kim, go ahead.
Madam President, I, Ms. Hawkins, I do have one question. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, ma'am.
On the dual participation, will there be a sign-off form or anything else? I know we're listing kind of what the, you know, the parents would list, what their child would be. Is there a sign-off form just to show that everybody signed off on it, that the, all the necessary channels?
We don't have one yet, but I think that that's an excellent idea. That was what we talked about when we ended up having that meeting with the coaches. So, the coaches know, okay, Mrs. Barris is going to participate in cheerleading and volleyball. Great. What are her practice times? That way, everybody's aware of what practice times and also what competition times. So, I won't be able to make her do this practice because I'm going to be in a volleyball game. Okay, great. Well, we know all of that. And then the coaches can't come back and get mad at, "How come you weren't at practice?" Well, everybody's going to be aware of that. But have we devised a form? We have not as of yet, but we will get that done.
Thank you.
You've got it.
Any other questions for Mr. Alvarez? All right. Moving on to the school discipline matrix update.
This one will even be faster. So, what I can tell you, first of all, I want to thank all of the parents that were involved in this. We had our principals come. They got to pick a parent. I told them, "Pick a parent that has had some issues with the discipline matrix. Don't pick that perfect parent." They're like, "Oh, everything's wonderful and great," because then we don't get any, in Spanish, we say contra, right? We don't get anybody that says, "Hey, this is a problem," right? So, I told them, "Pick somebody that you can work with and that will be honest with us, but is also open-minded." And so, I thank all of those parents because you guys fit that bill, and we had a really, really good discussion. So, the parents came together with the, with the principals, and we ended up talking about our discipline matrix. The elementary discipline matrix changes there. Very simple on bullying. And if you can see on the left-hand side, that's first to third grade. And then we have a fourth to sixth grade. This change came about roughly about a year ago, I believe, where we said a third-grader bullying versus a sixth-grader bullying. Little bit different, different situation. And the only question that the parents had in this one was that they wanted some bullying education for their first to third-grade student as well as the fourth through sixth. I do believe that was taking place. I just don't think we had it put in the discipline matrix. So, we're most definitely going to do that now that we, that we have that in there. The next one that was very unique, which I was kind of shocked, and I do this every year, but there was no cellphone policy for our elementary principals. So, they were dealing with cellphone policies under prohibited items. They did not have a cellphone policy. So, they ended up constructing a cellphone policy. Again, making sure that it was progressive and that it also gave some variation in there. If you notice, there are one to three days or one to three days recess, of course, for the younger kids, and then it progresses into ISS or in-school suspension. And parents have to be notified so that they can pick up their devices. And on the fourth through sixth grade, there are one to three days of lots of recess, and then one to three for the parents to pick up as well. And again, we hadn't seen that much, but as the years are going on, we're seeing younger and younger kids with phones, and it's starting to be a problem for, for our elementaries. In the secondary, what we needed was something between a fight and horseplay. And so, what we ended up talking with parents, excuse me, was shoving, pushing, tripping, body checking, shoulder checking, you guys have probably heard of that or seen that, headlocks, you know, those type of things, where we have the ability for the principal to go ahead, okay, there's a problem here, and we can address it. It doesn't have to be as severe as a fight, but it's definitely unwanted physical contact, and we need to be able to address that. Horseplay, a lot of times is just that, horseplay. But when anybody gets injured or gets, you know, mad afterwards, then that's no longer horseplay. So, they needed some aggressive physical contact. That was a requirement that the secondary said, we do need something in between. And so, that's where they came out with the aggressive physical contact. This is for both secondary and elementary. It's the bullying, and you saw that earlier, and the cellphone. On secondary, this is, this was the last one that we ended up changing. It's the possession or use of a weapon or having a weapon on campus. The first offense, it used to be an automatic 10-days out-of-school expulsion or hearing, and that is now changed to five to 10 days. The reason for this, or the change for this, is we're giving the principals the opportunity to go ahead and, through their investigation, let's say that you have a young man that forgot he had a knife clipped on his, on his pocket or on his belt, or maybe in their, you know, and I say a young man. We've had young ladies as well. But they forget, right? And they didn't threaten anybody. There was no intent to harm anyone. They just basically forgot that they have a weapon on, on them. This gives us the opportunity to recognize that and to see that. So, it gives a little bit of flexibility while... So it gives a little bit of flexibility while still remaining, let's say that you had a kid that had a problem with a, with a young man or a young woman, and they ended up saying, you know, we've, we've got an issue, and they end up bringing a weapon to campus. Then that still gives them that flexibility to go ahead, through their investigation, to go ahead and go to the full extent of, of the previous 10 day out of school expulsion hearing, as well as police contact. Go ahead then, Mr. Hawkins.
Madam President, members of the board, one, I want to thank Mr. Alvarez and the parents, because this was definitely a, this was probably one of the highlight conversations where they really did a deep dive into this particular area. And I want to, one, thank Mr. Alvarez and the committee for really looking at this. When they say weapon, they're talking, in this particular case, he used the best example, they really wanted to look at the knife issue. We have kids, we're in a rural agricultural area, we have farmers, we have situations and circumstances where we've seen that happen, and the, the previous automatic 10 day, you had to go to a hearing, and then you had to go through the process and have that same consideration. Well, well, more often than not, that consideration ultimately resulted in specific certain actions. So to, to provide that opportunity to happen at the building level, to reduce the time out of school, but still address that issue is where that comes in. And so when we talk about weapons, please do not misconstrue that if someone accidentally brings like a gun, they're going to be, no, that is not the dialogue. This is really about that pocket knife, or the knife on, on the ranch. Did I say that accurately, Mr. Alvarez?
Absolutely. And I wanted to thank our, our parents again, as Mr. Hawkins reiterate his, his point there. These were the parents that, you know, these were some things that get brought up throughout the year, and we wanted to address them, and the parents that came with us, very open-minded, and they, they did take those deep dives. We talked about some past experiences that they were aware of, and how that impacted different families, and what we could do to go ahead and still keep the teeth for the principal, if that's what's needed, or to be understanding, and give us another avenue if it was different circumstances. So truly thankful for that. And that's all I have. Stand for any questions?
Yes, any, any questions for Mr. Alvarez on the discipline matrix update? We won't be taking action on this as it stands individually, once we have the school handbooks, we will take action, it'll be part of that. All right. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, I don't think there's any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Associate Superintendent, Ms. Cindy Barris with enrollment updates.
So I left my computer on the copy machine, but as I was copying all these things to give you, because I'm always the one who has technology issues, even though I'm the technology support for my brother over here, but, so in front of you, we have our enrollment update, and we're up five from last month. So remember when we talked about that adjustment after spring break? So we're up five, and I was looking again. And the only thing that I can think of, like I said when I'm looking for that algorithm, is we do have one school that has a lot of turnaround, but when you look at the demographics of that school, that's what's expected. And so that's the only thing we see different, and you have the numbers in front of you, but I'm going to be excited, we're up five. I'm excited about the pre-K, the pre-K's up three. Now here's the thing about the pre-K, when you go into kindergarten, it's a, your birthday before or after date, right? But when you go into pre-K, it's after you turn three. So not every kid turns three on August 4th. And so once, once they do that, then for us, it's the age of four, so then they can come to us during that time. So we grew three in the pre-K, we lost a third grader along the way somewhere, we gained two fifth graders, we gained two seventh graders, and we lost a freshman. And so that, that was it, but if you do those numbers together, that's a positive of five. So I'm going to take that positive and be okay with this. There is an update on the back page of our virtual learning, those are our Learning Lab students. I am happy to say we potentially have two Learning Lab graduates. So, yeah, I'm excited about that. Long time coming for one, super proud of her, and the other one as well, they, they both have worked very hard. So we're excited about that. And they do participate in our graduation, so they do get the big show. And they'll get all the festivities, but they get the big show. And every kid deserves a big show if they make it. So do you have any questions on enrollment?
No, we're all with you, yay, up a little. You've got the mental health grant update for us tonight?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, members of the board, colleagues. So the wellness room data, we're, we're always excited about the wellness room data in a weird kind of way. We're excited that they're there, but it's really hard to know that we have that number of students that need that level of support. I'm glad we have that for them, but it's our, it's always there. So you have the numbers in front of you with our total being 3,443 visits. And remember, those are not unique visits, that's a culmination of visits. So later on, towards the end of the year, Joyce will give you a full breakdown of the unique visits and things like that, once our report, our report was submitted, but after it's submitted and we get approval, then she'll give you the number of unique visits in that entire breakdown. So we have our alongside data, and remember, that is the app for students, if they so choose, that they can get on the app and get support. If you read the little notes, I think my favorite one on the student feedback was the one, there are two, where I liked that you used examples and encouraged me to practice to be nicer to myself. Yeah, I might need to get on that app. So, and then there's another one about, I like how it could navigate to help, to the problem that I had for trouble sleeping. And so these are things that, that when we think of mental health support, we don't often think of those type of pieces as well. So that's the alongside data, we're excited to say that Jose Barrios just rolled their, their alongside information out, so you'll see those numbers increase as well. Our student well-being incompetency surveys are out, and so this is something that's required from the state, and we use this data. Last year, I think my favorite response from students was, when we were talking about survey data, they said, can you stop surveying us so much? So at, at the point in time, we were, we were asking a lot of information, this is how we get feedback, and so we took that into consideration, and we just used this one set of surveys, so hopefully the students will participate in that. Families and staff can also participate in that as well, so we sent those out, and a reminder was also sent out. And finally, at the bottom, I'm excited, our SHAT committee has done some great work in the past few years, and I'm super excited that they are looking at the, the staff and asking what supports that they could need. And I was super happy with some of the choices and options they had on there. If we could get that in-person yoga, I think I'd be a lot helpful for, for me personally, but you know, whatever. But we put this out to all of our staff members to see what their interests are, so the SHAT committee could target those types of interests. I don't know at this point how many responses we've had, but I am excited that they're taking staff interests in mind.
Any questions for Mrs. Barris?
Thank you.
No, thank you for that one. All right. Director of Finance, Ms. Michelle McCain, do you have anything for us during this section?
No, everything's on the consent agenda for me, thank you.
Thank you. Board of Education Finance Subcommittee Report, I took notes tonight, or a few days ago. So we started out by, sorry, Mrs. Clement and myself met with Mrs. McCain and Mrs. Alvarez last Thursday, whatever day that was, 24th at 4:00 PM, and we talked about, at the, at the moment, Mrs. McCain was working on the part of the budget process where you have to put in actual calendar days, so something that's a little bit different from last year, so I'm sure they've had conversations around that. She has received her 910B5 formula funding and started plucking numbers in there, and was getting really close to S E G, if not already there. It seems like there's a little bit more direction and specification as to what the money is, should be funding, quote unquote. I think the highlight of the meeting was, if you guys will remember, last year, in the budget that we approved, we thought we were going to have to tap into our cash reserves to the tune of $3 million, which we only had five. So the good news is, we have only had to tap into that about $1 million this year, so that's great news, because next year is looking like it will probably be a projection of 3 million. So if we have three plus three, that doesn't equal five, that would be a problem, but one plus three is a little bit better. And again, we were talking about consolidating the schools, we're taking a lot of action in how we adequately fund, but also use resources to the best use. We will be approving a bar tonight, where they gave us an additional 493 last year, they're taking 408 back, so that was not the highlight of the meeting. My question was, what kind of contributed to that savings or less spending? And to Mr. Alvarez's credit, we will say unfilled positions? It was kind of an inside joke, but it does, I mean, that is our biggest expense, and so as those go unfilled, even for sections of the year, there is that, there is that savings. Then we turn to the not very fun topic of the failure of the SB9, and we want to talk about how we're going to curtail that or carry that into the next year, because that's about $1 million. And that will be part of that 3 million that we anticipate we will have to use from cash carryover. I always, I ask this question a lot, and maybe it will finally stick, because I wrote it down, if there's any room to use any of our bonds to help with some of the SB9, and to that I was told, as long as it's a project that may have fallen in our FMP, there is a possibility to use some of that funding that may help with that lack of SB9, but that would be the only way. And then finally wrapping it up, budget meeting, I'm sure she'll tell us when we're going to do that, but potentially sometime this week. I know she's in the thick of it, and working as hard and as fast as she possibly can, but I'm sure she'll talk about that in her section. How about that when you take notes?
That was nicely done.
Wow, yeah.
Very thorough.
Seven years later, I finally got it. Any questions or anything to add, Mrs. Clement?
No, you took really good notes.
Right?
Even the notes I took, you covered it all.
Awesome, awesome. Well, short and sweet and succinct.
President of Montenegro, a quick question.
Sure.
When can we present the SB9 again to the voters?
Thank you for that. It will be on this year's general election in November.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam President, members of the board, if you don't mind me adding in, as of right now, based on our current circumstances, I just want to make sure that you clearly articulate what you said, which is, at the beginning of the school year, there is no funding set aside from our local funds for any regular maintenance of campus needs. So on August 15th, if the pipe busts at any one campus, or if the boiler goes out, or any number of things happens at a field, let's say the pump blows out at one of our fields, there are no dollars that will be generated because we don't have SB9 to go pay for that.
Not out of bond.
Not out of bond, right? And so we will have to find a way to find money to do that, but more importantly, that is why, to Mr. McMillan's point, it is so important that we, SB9 goes back out for the renewal. We saw our neighbors down the road go through this a couple of years ago, and it was very difficult, because when you have maintenance needs, and when you have eight buildings like we do, you have maintenance needs every day and every week. And so it's crucial to have the ability to do that. I apologize for cutting in, but this, I just wanted to add that for those who may be listening out in the space.
Perfect segue, thanks, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, ma'am.
Audit Subcommittee did not meet, the audit was already completed, so we have no need to meet. Threat Assessment Committee, Mr. McMillan, did you guys meet?
Mr., I'll have to defer to Mr. Alvarez.
Madam President, we met April 21st. We did have a threat situation at one of our schools, so we implemented our threat assessment. We end up, in our threat assessments, we talk about what actions we took, when we took them, who was involved. We kind of do a debrief, if you will. The whole reason and purpose behind this is to see, is there anything that we left out, is there anything that we could do to improve? I'm happy to say that that situation was handled appropriately. The administration did amazing, phenomenal, they did a great job addressing all of the issues. We notified all of the appropriate people that needed to be notified, and then of course ended up putting that information out on Fairness Square to inform our families as well. We also ended up talking about the situation, the tragedy that ended up happening in Dallas. Mr. Potts is being extremely instrumental in working on our COPS grant, so we're looking to get that access control. But one of the things that was shared in our threat assessment is that any of the processes and procedures that we have put into, they can all be defeated. And so we ended up talking to our principals and explained how important it is that students realize, teachers realize, custodians, IAs, secretaries, we're all, our safety is in each other's hands. The situation that ended up happening in Dallas, a student, they had a metal detector, they did the, all the protocols, checked the doors, and a student opened the door for the assailant. And just that fast, that situation turned tragic. And so we talked about that, so in these next meetings with the students, they're going to share all of that information with the students to just make them mindful that we all have to take a part in our, in our student safety. And we reiterated our safety, save something app, so that if kids see something, they hear of something, please let somebody know. So it was a very productive meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Alvarez on Threat Assessment Committee?
Just a comment or question, Mr. Alvarez? Madam President, Mr. Alvarez, so when we think about threat assessment, when you guys go over your meeting, is technology involved? Because when you look at somebody coming and making a threat, which, what they did with Silver Schools, but when you look at Western, to me, that's a threat. And you're engaging and threatening the education of students. When you look at the, the university and the students and what they had to go through, you know, it was, you couldn't log on to your online learning platform, who do you call? What, what are those steps necessary? So if something goes down, what are the steps on getting with?
Technology.
Exactly.
So, so, you know, I, I can't say enough.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but just thinking on, you know, when you, threat assessment, but then when you look at that, that's also a threat, and I don't know if that's something that would be added to that.
So we don't do a threat assessment piece for, for cyber attacks, I guess, but what you would be talking about is a cyber attack. That falls in, in the realm of our tech department, and they have different computer programs, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Potts, security and, and programs such as this Sentinel One, these are just programs that are out there to go ahead and. But we do have appropriate programs that look for those cyber threats and, and address that, Mr. Hawkins.
I just want to add also that, and Mr. Potts, please speak up here, there's, periodically there's a report that is done on our systems, safety reports, as far as checking, that includes, and if I'm saying this out of sequence, you'll look at me weirdly, and I know I'm incorrect, not to, to give away private, right, but they check for phishing, right? For, I think we were tested randomly from time to time on whether or not numbers of individuals fall for phishing scams, and if so, Mr. Potts gets a report on that, and he's able to educate, let us know, or, and let those individuals know, you know, that was a test phishing scheme. When I say phishing, that's basically, the obligatory email you get from Mr. Hawkins, or text message you get from Mr. Alvarez that says, hey, I really need you to send me some money, would you send me $100, or could you go to the store for me? There, you get, there are scams like that, but there are also phishing setups through the software, and I, is, I can't say, remember the name of it off the top of my head, but there is some report that you get regularly. Would you mind speaking to that?
So the district gets a report from a company called Securing, that is part of the state office of cybersecurity, and so it looks at, it looks at the outside of our network to see.
I get to tell you how you always correct me, go into the microphone, you have to go to the microphone.
I'm watching the volumes here, and they're great.
Okay.
He is loud and clear.
So, we, we do uh receive a report from them, and it looks at uh our outside vulnerability in terms of what um surfaces are visible on the outside of our firewall, what um vulnerabilities they might have, what we can do to remedy them. It also lets us know um which employees have been involved in various email breaches that have come about. Um, most of those, when we look at the email breaches, um, have been tied to uh employees uh using their accounts personally, not necessarily for a school, but a lot of times we find them in like, they, where they used it on a shopping site or something like that, it's been attacked. Um, and so we get those, and we will talk to the staff members regarding that. Um, we also have the software that monitors our, our uh staff for other events like that, and will reset their passwords. Um, I know one of the big ones recently was archive.org, um, was held ransom and, and we had teachers, especially with N H D, that used that, and so um we would uh, we would see stuff from them for that. Um, we did receive part of the state cybersecurity grant that um, it will be working with a company called Nova Four to do phishing, trout phishing um campaigns with our staff to see how they um react to them, and so those will be getting uh set up and going.
You said trout fishing?
No, file.
Sorry. Sorry, hearing aid, okay. So, to answer your question and support both of Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Potts said, so we definitely have um these protective measures for that type of threat assessment, recalling that in July, we went through that ex- that opportunity, and it wa- it was swift actions and then month of sleepless nights from Mr. Alvarez to ensure that hi- his efforts in keeping our system from being ransomed.
Mr. Potts or Alvarez?
Mr. Potts, Mr. Alvarez. It was Mr. Potts, thank you. A- a- and so he did, uh, but it was also alerted through a software that he received an alert from that let him know there was something amiss, um, and when you get that alert, you have to be cognizant of what that information is and the potential for it, and then act on it. So you can get the alert and go, okay, I'll check on it in the morning, or you can get the alert and then stop what you're doing at one o'clock in the morning and drive to Central Office from across the state and unplug everything. And so we do have measures in place that protect us, and we have been Potts.
That's the biggest part of it. Um, does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you're welcome. Next, we've got Board President, so this is our second reading of these policy advisories that we will be uh taking action on tonight, following our second reading. Yes, we've got them. So second reading, policy number two forty-six, G E retiree return to work. Second reading, policy advisory two forty-seven, A D B, A D C, drug, alcohol, and tobacco, nicotine-free schools. This is a new policy, A D B, A D C dash R, drug, alcohol, and tobacco, nicotine-free schools. Second reading, policy advisory of two forty-eight, E E A dash R, student transportation. Second reading, policy advisory number two forty-nine, G E B B dash E A, staff conduct, conduct with students. Second reading, policy advisory two fifty, this will be a deletion of G B E D, tobacco use by staff's members smoking, replaced by an, another one, so it, it doesn't just go away, but it's a new policy. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-one, G C Q F, discipline, suspension, termination, and discharge of professional staff members. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-two, G D Q D, discipline, suspension, termination, and discharge of support staff members. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-three, I J O C dash E, school volunteers. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-four, J I C, student conduct. Second reading, policy advisory two fifty-five, delete J I C G, tobacco use by students and smoking. Again, that will be replaced by a subsequent policy. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-six, J K R, student discipline, J K E B, student discipline. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-seven, J L C D, administering medicines to students. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-eight, K F E A, community use of school facilities. Second reading, policy advisory number two fifty-nine, K F A, public conduct of school property. And then second reading, policy advisory two sixty, this is a deletion, K F A A, tobacco use forward slash smoking on school premises. And another deletion, K F A A dash R, tobacco use, smoking, school premises. So those were in your board book, um, prior to last month's meeting for review. And so if there are any questions or any modifications that any of the. If it's necessary, if we approve these policies, um, please let us know right now. All board members have had a chance to review those policies? All right, board comments, well, it is April twenty-eighth, so the next time we come out here, it'll be for graduation, which is just crazy, um, I think the year has moved on, moved along really well, it's been busy. I mean, it was busy in the summer, and it's continued to be busy, and lots of good things are happening in our schools, and we are so thankful that we're on the other side of not, what, what's certainly having to do with right now, it's very tragic and just, I just, my heart aches for them. Um, but thank you to Mr. Hawkins leadership and the amazing team that he has built, built here at Silver Schools, um, that leads over to out here in Cliff's School, um, we're just so thankful for the leadership we have, but also all of the educators and support staff that um make Silver Schools great. From the activities that we get to hear from, which are just awesome, to the athletics, as many of us spent some time at the golf course today, it was really, really neat. Um, in my son's group, there was a kid from Cliff, and there was a kid from Cobra, and a kid from Silver, and it's just really neat to get to just see a whole bunch of grand county kids um playing golf together and having fun. And I'm sure that's the case in, in many of the sports and activities, when we all get together, we're just one big family, so that was awesome. Um, yeah, graduation is here, um, I have no doubt that we have prepared these new very well to go out into the world, and bittersweet for sure, um, but super exciting, so. Thank you for all you've been doing for our kids, day in and day out, to get to this big moment, as um Cindy talked about. Um, they're ready, so we've got time to celebrate, thank you so much, Mr. Potts.
I just want to bring on President Montenegro's co- board comments. Um, you know, we have an amazing administrative staff and teachers, I want to thank you all for what you all do. I want to go off on my board comments from last month, you know, I, I can't stress how much that in the innovation zone that the district has, which gives the opportunity for all our students work ethic skills on what they need to go on through, through the new, the new path plan, their career. Um, yet to get one student that is interested in government, and I'll get that one before I term ends. But, um, you know, it's, each intern that I've had, they've been phenomenally awesome. You know, they have all went to college, and they're being successful individuals, which makes me proud because it's what's coming out of my office. Um, you know, I, you know, budget request for Cliff's Schools is thinking, you know, give Cliff's Schools a little bit more money so I can hang out to the cliff students a little bit more longer. You know, it doesn't look like that, but um, um, uh, looking forward to next school year, just to see, you know, hopefully, I don't know if the grant's been, but hopefully it gets approved and we have that.
Hasn't opened yet.
Real excited just to see, you know, if we're granted that opportunity and given more schools, more opportunities that come through. I also want to just mention, you know, um, with our G O bond that passed last year, those individuals, you know, you might have um some, some tax incentives for, on trying to apply with the assessor's office on tax exemptions. So if you get your head of household, they'll take off two thousand off your value, after to evaluation. If you're a veteran, um, those just increased from four to nine. So we give a substantial amount of, um, tax breaks from paying the taxes off the twenty-five tax rate. You have to tell me first, um, to go into the assessor's office and then get that. And if you don't take care of that, then that's going to probably overcome six extra a year. So I just wanted to mention that to everybody out there, and um, Facebook land, safer world, human building, um, other than that, I can't believe how fast schools are approaching. I guess I said I'm, I'm crying. I, I actually don't know what to think because time's gone by so fast, but um, it's been great.
Thank you, um, great to be out here in Quah, thanks for the hospitality, thanks for the meal. I think that it's really exciting that we're, we're voting on the architecture firm out here in Cliff as well for the new Cliff School design, um, so I think that's really neat. Um, and uh, yes, May's upon us, graduation season is upon us, and uh, we'll be out here before you know it, for graduation here, and graduation at Sore. I want to tell a, a quick story, um, this past week, I spent the majority of the week helping to do the Hila Bike Race, and I helped provide um medical supports and coverage for the bike race, and it's, and it's thirty-eighth year, and it's, it's really um a pretty very event in the cycling, this is like the top, if not the top, uh, top three cycling events in the nation, it's held right here in our, in our backyard. And it's neat because the whole community comes out, I mean, we've got, I've got volunteers from Western, from the hospital, from just community members, uh, coming out to, to help what we do to help put it on, and, and even our school system. Now, Mr. uh, Mr. Potts, I see him out there year after year, doing his thing for the race, and we should also saw Dana Jones out doing some driving, I'm sure there's others that are out in the school systems as well. Um, so, so thank you for that, and, and helping promote the race and help support the race. But what was kind of unique about uh this race, um, this was the second stage, uh, goes out to Mugio, and we finish near the town of Mugio, the hilltop, and I'm in the first aid tent, and we had the pro men come in, and there's, there was like a hundred and forty riders, I think, a whole bunch of teams. I mean, there were seven riders per team, and we had this one team that was resting after the, the race, and they're talking about the race, and, you know, how everything went, and, and they were saying, hey, this is really one of the leader races because we have the community supports, and that's, the community comes together to support this race, and and the, one of the guys had mentioned it, it's like, yeah, did you see that school out there that we passed by? All those kids were out there cheering us on, and, you know, that was really neat to have, see all those kids out there. And I know Cliff's Schools has done that year after year, had the kids out there as they go racing by, and, and I just thought it was neat, and, and thanks to the staff, administration, and the kids for going out there and recognizing them as, and hollering at them as they go by, um, it didn't go unnoticed. I mean, there are some professional athletes that are like, man, they would have never known us had a school to do that. And so I, I thought that was really neat just to, to overhear them talking about that, and um, so, thanks for letting me share that.
Thanks for the story, Mr. Potts, that's awesome. That's what it's all about, right? Not all in the classroom, they learn so much other things, maybe someone will be a pro cyclist, somebody from Cliff's School.
Mrs. Mc- you're gonna be Mrs. McMillan all night.
Mrs. Clement.
So, all behalf of, but Mr. McMillan was just. The, with, it is really cool to be out here voting on the architectural firm, and this process for me, I kind of came into this and, you know, on the ladder rings of the master facilities plan, and it has just seemed like it just has gone so quickly, which I know Mr. Hawkins would probably like, oh, they've been talking about this forever, but it does seem like it just, once that bond passed, which again, we cannot think our community members enough for, it has just seemed like, I'm just shocked at how quickly this process really is moving ahead, and so I'm super excited as we're getting through and going, um, how quickly we're going to see these things come through. And so I, I just, it's kind of shocking that it's really neat to kind of just sit back and just take all of them. Um, I would like to also recognize last week, and this last full week of April is um administrative professional week, so, you know, shout out to every administrative professional across the district, and I know even just with us and on the seaside, just we, I could not function through some weeks without just her little reminders, and so thank you so, so much. But I know um across all of the district and all of everybody is just, they're just a definite vital role within our schools. Um, also, I would like to just recognize again, uh, all of the students that are participating in the extracurricular activities, and it is really cool to hear just the stories of these students competing at the state level and then going to a national level, and just what they're bringing back and being able to share with us, and just the life lessons and the experiences, and even just the relationships that they're building and the experiences of. And when you sit and think, a lot of these students, maybe one had these experiences or this ability to travel to some of these areas without these extracurricular um activities and sports, and so I know it was mentioned about fundraising, and I know I usually see fundraising letters throughout the community, but just to, everybody, you know, support the kids going out there, and, you know, buy their, buy candy bars and buy, you know, their raffle tickets and all of that because this is so, it's such a crucial part of the, just life-building skills that what is going to turn them into functional members of society, and just the public speaking skills and all of that that comes along. But it's really cool to see, and so I encourage everybody to support them in whatever way they can.
All right, next up is open public comment, I do not receive any emails, I think, I didn't get an email notification, then it's on the line. All right, um, just real quickly as a follow-up to open public comment, last month, I know I was not intended, and we had some open public comment, we as a board have the privilege of, you know, it is within our purview that if we want to change the open public comment verbiage, um, that we're doing standard, we, we did this, we started this email section around COVID, whenever we were doing like online meetings, and in the past, we have had the, the language where there was a section of open public comment that would be specific to the agenda, and then the second one was, or vice versa, it didn't have to be something that was on the agenda, and so just listening in, um, on kind of what happened last month, if that's something that the board would like to discuss, how we want to format our o- open public comment sections of our agendas, just let me know, um, I don't want to do it without Dr. Diaz um here with us to kind of decide, but I think that's something that we may want to clean up the verbiage, and also if we want to have a section that doesn't have to apply to the agenda, um, we can decide that overboard. So, just for future, something that I thought was to be discussed, but again, last month, we need to work out well. They met with you, and everything was resolved well, so. All right, um, item number seven is our action items, that's our consent agenda, so I will let Mrs. McCain present this for us.
All right, good evening, everybody, and I have a few things on the list for approval tonight. My, um, first item is one eighty-one, which is the total checks written in March for a total of three million ninety-six thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and ninety-three cents, for which I asked for approval. I have one budget adjustment request, um, uh, has prepared, asking us to reduce our operational budget due to adjustments to our final calendar for this year and um any growth units that they may have funded us for. So we have a reduction of four hundred eight thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents from our operational budget. from our operational budget. And awards of bids and proposals. I, we have our Cliff Architect RFP, to whom we are awarding Decker LTV as the Architect of Choice for this project. And then we have a nice, wonderful list of donations again this week or this month. We have Silver City News Lodge donated five hundred dollars to Silver High Call. WNN Communications donated seven hundred dollars to Silver High FFA. Mountain Ridge Ace Hardware via the Cape Auction donated a thousand dollars to Cliff. Suburban Propane, okay. Suburban Propane, who's Street Griffins, donated a thousand dollars to Cliff via the Cape Auction. Walmart food boxes, we received, Brian. An award from Walmart for one five hundred dollars for our food boxes that we give out at our different holidays. And Dr. Weshi Cook donated five thousand dollars to NHD. For all of these donations, I ask for your thanks. And for the other items, I ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mrs. McCain. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Conwell, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Thank you to all those that donate to support our students' activities and sports. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Transportation, we struck from the envelope on the item transportation. Anything to present? Nothing. All right. These next action items. Item number eight, consideration and approval of the Cliff School's calendar for twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six school year. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, you have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Conwell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the RFP for Cliff School's architectural and design. Do you have a motion? Motion by Mrs. McCain, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the athletic handbook updates, but yeah, the athletic handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Conwell, you have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and approval of the HB one seventy-one graduation requirements and class ranking criteria as presented by Associate Superintendent Cindy Ferris in our previous meeting. As an update, I did reach out to make sure that if the board chose to move forward with the graduation ranking criteria, which was that there would be no Ds or Fs on the graduating individual transcript in order to qualify for the valedictorian and salutatorian. We wanted to make sure that there was no students that currently fell within that, that this might jeopardize their ability to receive that class ranking. And she, they went and looked at the junior, senior, junior, sophomore, and freshman classes, and there are no students that would fall into that criteria, causing them to possibly lose that ranking. So if the board is ready to take action, I have one quick question, quick follow up question. Just because I've heard some talk and even I can't tell them. So currently, we have some seniors that got to this semester and all of a sudden needed an online learning class.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What changes with this? Is it now, is there now another requirement? Do they still have that online learning requirement?
No, ma'am. That requirement went away and, oh, excuse me, now the president was wrong. That requirement went away with this adoption of the new HB one seventy-one. It's still on there for, and what happened with our seniors is those seniors were in eighth grade during COVID. And so during our COVID years, all students were given credit for an online course. So it wasn't something that was looked at. But because they were eighth graders, the assumption was that that would count because there are some courses that count in eighth grade. But if you go back and you look at the graduation requirements, they're very designated courses that, that you can get credit for, high school credit in eighth grade. And online was not one of them. So we found out later on that that was the case. And we had a little over sixty students that fell in that range. And so that's what happened. Now, there are some remedies to correct that moving forward. Principal Alexander, he's done a good job of building a plan so we're not in this type of situation moving forward and to offer that ahead of time so students aren't, and within their day. So it's not like this extra course the way it has, has had, has had to be because they needed every single other classes to graduate and this. And so there is a great plan because while Alexander and her team have discussed that moving forward. And so one of the classes, it is an online learning class where you will have, you'll be in school, but the curriculum will be online and the teacher is certified in that area. But that needs it because it's that, the online credit. So if you recall, it was an AP class, an honors class, or an online class. So that's how it was kind of missed is if your class could fall in any of those three categories. And about sixty students didn't have those three categories. And that's where that bug became. And so she had some swift actions and her actions. And I know Mrs. Windsor has been working with those seniors and they're moving forward. And things are, things are moving up and, and she's been kind of, Mrs. Windsor has taken upon herself to really counsel and meet with, with those students. And she checks on their progress on a regular basis.
So that goes away then?
Yes, ma'am.
With this, there's no more, you have to take an AP, you have to take an honors, you have to take an honor. So if you could just very high level say, what changes with HB one seventy-one?
So, so the major changes with one seventy-one had to do with getting rid of the requirement for Algebra II. There are no longer, and we haven't had it for a while, but there, there's no longer a requirement written in the law about EOCs and the course exams. And the honors, AP, dual credit distance learning, that, that was that. That's a major change. They've added the two local credits. Thank you, Ben. That's a major change. And remember, we wanted those two local credits. And they, they had to come through the board, but those two local credits are Future Readiness and CTE. To cover the Future Readiness would be like a fine art or a core elective. And then the, those were the two courses. And then the, they've added CTE and work-based, work-based learning as an option within the, the core English, math, science, which you had to have the person who's teaching that, and this is where Cliff comes into play because they have a business teacher who also has a math credential. So they wanted to use her business class as a fourth, a third math, fourth math. And so the fourth, the fourth math. Because you still have to have four math courses, but Algebra II is not a requirement. And so, and then the algebra and geometry, and this is a funny conversation I was having with a neighbor in the district. Algebra and geometry could be offered in the middle school and count for high school credits. And this is where it gets unique because it says middle school. Last distinction, it said eighth grade. Like health could be offered in the eighth grade. Algebra one could be offered for credit in the eighth grade. But the distinction now has changed. So algebra and geometry could be offered for credit in the middle school and would cap towards your four years of math requirement. And we have a potential plan to see, you know, some of our students qualify for that. It's not, we'll be meeting with the math department to discuss those and whether we have further guidance on that from our math experts.
So currently, the math requirements are only three years and we're, after this will be four. Is that right?
No, it's four years.
Always been four?
It's always been four years. And so the change in the number of credits was really history. History was three point five, now it's four. With the reduction in the New Mexico history being embedded. And then it's like, oh, come up with another history. And that's where they went with the international studies, international relations slash world geography. So we wanted those two courses there. And so the others kind of stayed the same. Three credits in science, four credits in math, four credits in ELA. But the math, it was Algebra one, geometry. Algebra two was a requirement for math. And then most of our students take either financial lit for their fourth math or if, if they don't go on to take trigonometry, pre-capitalist calculus. So that's what it was. And a lot of our students were selling out in Algebra two. And so that became a requirement. So the requirement to have Algebra two is no longer required for students to graduate. You don't have to take Algebra two. We as a district still have to offer it. It's the same thing with computer literacy, but they don't have to take it as a requirement. Every student who's graduating are current freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors have to have Algebra two. And so our upcoming freshmen will not, Algebra two will not be a requirement.
That was the next question. This is the phase in incoming freshman time?
In coming freshman.
So next year's, this year's juniors, sophomores, and freshmen still need that online AP honors?
Yes, ma'am.
And real quickly, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. What do we, what were our two local credit? What are we choosing for them to take?
Well, we, what the recommendation was from the committee was CTE, one CTE and one Future Readiness. Up on the board, so the CTE classes are all the CT courses we have offered. And then a Future Readiness would be a core elective or a fine art. And so Mrs. Alson actually did a phenomenal, we just love that woman. Because it reminds us of this. I mean, come on. She really did a phenomenal job on what that looks like. And so you can't stop that woman. But those are, there are our local requirements if we went this way. Those are all the courses in, at Cliff High School that you could take to meet the CTE course. So if you have one elective for that, then there are all the classes that you could take to meet your Future Readiness course. And so she, she has it listed like core elective. Brian teaches an outdoor. Thank you. Outdoor rec as a science core, that's a core class, things like that. That would be a core elective, an honors class, an AP additional. Some of our students will take chemistry and then they'll take AP chemistry or honors chemistry. So two, so the second one will count as a Future Readiness course because that is a core elective.
When you say core, it means like math, science, reading, history?
ELA and history.
Okay, okay. I was in all these meetings, I remember. Okay, I think I got it.
National History Day would be a core.
Okay. It's just because like parents are asking a lot and I'm like, wait a minute, I'm changing this again. So I want, so I wanted just to be able to.
And you're always more than welcome to have an email, you know?
Yeah, that's, but I probably should also, I mean, it was just, when you're in those conversations, it's nice to be like, oh, my God, you know? No, it's like, yeah, I know this, you know? But, okay.
It was also tax time.
Well, and I didn't see this because I was calling in. So this is super helpful. Super, super. So, yeah, so visuals, visuals and that's. Okay. We all feel comfortable with that? That was the discussion after the first and second. We haven't had a first and second, but anyway, that was the discussion.
Mr. Hopkins, did you have something to add?
I was just wanting to reiterate that with the incoming group of students, they will also go through orientation. Parents, 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 the new year, the counselors go through an orientation with students. And they start looking at their schedule. And subsequently, every year, when they, students sit down to look at their schedules for next year, the counselor once again goes through a guiding process, will, will go through their presentation of what course offerings are offered, what it takes if you want to fit within certain criteria and what to look for. And so students, the hardest part of it all, this is parents, you have to remind your student to listen and take notes. But our counselors, Mike, Tommy, and, and Miss Barry and Miss Johnson Gomez also provide opportunities. They link out to them. They will also give you resources, information, help make sure your kids have information, even though they're doing their scheduling.
Thank you. I thought of my other question. How do you get to four math without Algebra two?
You can take, so let's use Cliff as an example. So you have Algebra one, geometry, financial math, and business math. Or you take Algebra one, geometry, Algebra two typically trade calculus for those that had that. But see right there, they have the business math. And so.
So there are courses.
In Silver, we don't have that business math.
No, because they don't have a business teacher who also has a math credential.
So how do you get four in Silver?
So Algebra two is typically, and then a financial literacy. We are looking at and contemplating, and this is the hard part, is it's all about credentialing and who people are. So if you're looking at a work-based math or something like that, a CTE type of math, which is allowed for, that person also has to hold a math credential. And we don't have that. And so you wanted the flexibility because I can say, we do now, but in five years, I don't know what that looks like. In two years, I don't know what that looks like. I know what that looks like next year.
So we're saying it's not required, but for many kids to get.
It's their only way to get their four math.
Okay, okay.
And there are some schools, your larger schools, so this is guidance for the entire state.
Right.
And so there are many larger schools that have like a remedial math. And so you will take a remedial math in Algebra one, a geometry, and a financial math.
And so the way that seniors don't have to take a math is because they took something in eighth grade counted? Or they took two years of math somewhere along the way?
Algebra, Algebra counted. We, like I said, we are floating the idea of there may be a handful of students who qualify. And when I say qualify, we got to look at what those qualifications are. Because it's also our goal to make sure students are where they should be and need to be, not where they, not where we hope they can do well. Hope is not a strategy. I tell people that all the time. It's not an instructional strategy we enforce. So when we look at kind of where the student stands, state testing, why, things like that, are they ready? Do they have the foundational skills to have that Algebra one in seventh grade? Because that's what it's looking at. When you saw that middle school, you could offer both Algebra one and geometry at the middle school level. And so because of the way our schools are organized here and in town, we have the capacity to kind of shift. So their math teacher here is their math teacher for middle and high. So they could make those adjustments if we needed to, if we have a student who needs to step up because now we're allowed to do so. And so we have to look at those things and see what's available for our students to take and what best fits their schedule and, and where they are, you know, growth wise, where, where they are, what they are ready for.
So what you're saying is you have the ability to say, yes, this kid took Algebra one in seventh grade, but they're not showing the competencies that they need to, to count that as one of their four. Is that what you're saying?
So yes, in a sense, like they would, it would be how, if they pass the class. If you take Algebra one in seventh grade and you get an A, you don't get to count that as passing Algebra one. You would, just like all of our other students, you would have to take that again in eighth grade. So what we, what we would do is we would take a look and see if the students are ready. Because for Algebra one, your foundation of mathematics, your foundational skills should be pretty solid. You don't, you don't walk in and say, I'm going to give Algebra one a crack at the age of eleven. You know, that's, that's not how that typically works. So that's not a good setup for success for students. And so because, because it's allowable, doesn't mean it's required. That, that's the difference. So it's allowable for those that are ready for it. It's not required for seventh graders to take. And that's what you said. And that's what you said. Got it.
Okay, that was my question.
I do have one question, Madam President. Mrs. Ferris.
So we're just discussing also to the like online classes and lessons for online classes. Is it possible to utilize like a teacher that does business math here at CLIF to do an online hybrid class for students in Silver City to help get those or is that something that's just kind of gets too messy?
It could be, but because of the calendar differences, it does get a little bit messy. But is it something that we could absolutely look into? We could, but it, it is difficult and I can tell you, I, I know my teacher's standing in the back and I'm not going to look at her because I know, you know, I remember what those teachers went through when they were trying to do half in, half online and half in the classroom. And I don't, I can't think of a positive interaction from a teacher during that time. I can tell you a litany of the other way, but I can't tell you a lot of positive interactions. And the conversation being had by the teacher was it was too difficult to give the attention to the kids online and the kids in the classroom at the exact same time. And so that would almost be asking that teacher to go back that way, which is very, very difficult to do.
Okay. I think we got it all, Ben. Is that an idea? We can vote on this if we all already. So consideration and approval of HB 171 graduation requirement and class ranking criteria as presented in our previous meeting. I'll mention it first, by Associate Superintendent Cindy Ferris. Do I have an act, uh, do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Mrs. McCain, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? We've already done that extensively. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And I feel comfortable during that, Dr. Diaz was also part of the things, we were in there and we, we talked about the class rating. So, um, I feel like, I feel like all bases are covered. Okay, consideration and approval of the second meeting of policy advisories, number 246 through 260, um, open the floor for motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Condon, you have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And then consideration and approval of our 2324 audit report as presented last month. Would you take action on it this month? All right, open the floor for motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, you have a second? Second, second by Mrs. McCain. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Again, open the comment, I have nothing, excited, can you come in? If you want to change that, we can do that in future meeting. Future meetings are applicable, agenda items. Here we go. Uh, next finance committee is going to be May 15th. Next work session and regular board meeting is May 19th. Right in the middle of there will be out here at CLIF's graduation on May 16th. Um, then there's the full law conference. Let me know if you plan on attending June 5th through the 7th. We have our leadership retreat, it's going to be a pow cop this year, July 10th through 12th, same theme. Let me know if you intend to attend. And then MCEL, some of the leadership conference, July 10th through 12th, same theme, but not the 50th, those are the two, three, four, one. And then NMSBA 2025 annual convention, December 4th through 6th. Uh, high school graduation for CLIF, May 16th. We'll see you guys all there. We're really excited to celebrate with you. Senior High, uh, Silver High Senior Rock, May 20th at 8:30, they'll go to their elementary school. Silver High's graduation will be held Friday, May 23rd at 7:30, leaving. And then CLIF Schools' Last Day of School is May 22nd. Um, we have parent teacher conferences, May 23rd, I found that a little bit on, but okay, we'll go with it. And then Memorial Day and then Silver, you guys still need to come back to school for that week, so. Oh, Silver Scholars, okay. Got it. Executive session, the board may like to go into executive sessions for reasons permitted. Mr. Hopkins?
Madam President, the board, I apologize for interrupting you. I just wanted to go back to this to convince, um, I just want to make a request to his, um, CLIF regarding, um, the personal matter that's going to happen on that, thank you, for the CLIF graduation for me. And so I, I just want to visit the students, the staff, if we can, if we should. It's really important and I don't lose it, but I also have a founding thing I, I know. Toronto Honors, well, so if permission, I might visit a committee.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you said that because do we need to do a special budget? No, we said we had proven a subsequently, I didn't take, no, I'm not. Okay, I thought we were going to have to have a special meeting this Friday to approve the budget, but we don't. We can approve it on the, on our next meeting, so we're good. But thank you for that, so we're going to. Executive session, do we need to go into executive session? Okay. And so motion for adjournment, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Condon, you have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. McCain. Uh, Patrick Lee, please do a roll call.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz? Yes, yes, Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tann.
We are adjourned and it is 8:13.